This is another experience we weren't sure if we were ever going to see him be able to have. I also wanted to say thank you for allowing the school to have a service dog. Our son was so excited when he found out that the school would have one. And yesterday I received a picture of him smiling so big as he spent time with Barney, waiting on his bus to bring him home. I think this is a great thing and is going to help so many children. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Julia Smith, as she said, and I am a Madison City substitute teacher. And I have experience in the pre-K early beginnings program at Madison City when I was a full-time paraprofessional there. And I would like to express my concerns about the pay for the paraprofessional subs. And I'm not sure I saw on the agenda tonight that you guys were going to be voting on the salary budget. But I just feel like that the pay that the paraprofessional subs get, and actually even teacher subs, is on the low end. And I sub because I want to be able to help the teachers and the students. And it makes it difficult at times to think about whether I want to sub in the classroom with the special needs kids as a paraprofessional where the pay is so low, it's only 7.25 an hour, or whether I would pass that up for a different position to sub in. And I think it would be good to have a higher pay there. And I think it's good for the teachers. I know it's hard for the permanent subs to find subs, especially for the special needs classrooms because of that. And I think it's good for the teachers, good for the students, to have some people in there that are getting paid a higher amount for the work and effort that they're putting into subbing. So I just wanted to express my concerns there. And I don't know, like I said, maybe you've already addressed that in the proposed salary schedule, but that's what I came to let you know.
Thank you so much.
Hi. I'm going to reiterate what she said, just because I've been subbing, and she makes a very good point. The special education department, especially the self-contained units, they don't have enough employees. They are struggling. Some of these classrooms have very small numbers of adults and large numbers of kids. And I do think that the pay could incentivize more people to come in. On that same line, I know that you've already approved playground upgrades, but I'm going to keep being the broken record there because I did sub in a self-contained unit in one of the schools this week, and there was only one child in my class that could access the playground. The others could not, they couldn't use any of it. They played in the dirt next to it because they couldn't even get over the barrier to get into the playground. We have a visually impaired child who has to step over, I mean, it's got to be an 18, 20-inch tall barrier to get into one of the playgrounds. We do not have accessible playgrounds in this district. I think Midtown is great, but like I've said before, there's no ramp to get on the equipment. So you can roll up to it, but you can't actually use it. And even though Midtown does not have a self-contained unit, any child can break their leg, break their hip, be in a wheelchair for, you know, on any number of months. They won't be able to play anymore. So I think that it's very important to work on that. And I just want to say how incredibly heartbreaking it was to see those children this week. They could not use any of it. They could barely even make it over the sidewalk because the dips from the sidewalk down to the dirt is so high that they were stumbling over it. They could not, you know, even get out there. So for their 30 minutes outside, they sat under a tree in the dirt because there's nothing for them to use. So I just want to, you know, reiterate how important and nice it would be to add some things in the schools. Even if you can't do a full renovation, add some things that these kids can play with because they deserve it too. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, that will end our public comments for tonight, and we will move into business action items. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval the consent agenda contains the following items. A, Minutes 22-11, May the 3rd, 2022. B, notwithstanding the tuition formula contained in Policy 6.1.2b3, the recommendation the board frees the tuition for upcoming 2223 school year for non-resident students attending Madison City Schools pursuant to their parents' employment with the school system at the tuition levels set for the current year. Policy 4.14, cameras in self-contained classrooms, and CSC-X student dress. C, a field trip request for Discovery Middle School students to the MCEC Global Summit on July 17-21, 2022, in Washington, DC. A field trip request D for Liberty Middle School students to attend the MCEC Global Summit on July 17-21, 2022, in Washington, DC. E, a field trip request for Bob Jones High School students to iFly indoor skydiving and Six Flags on July 13 through the 14th of 2022. And F, a service agreement by and between the City Board of Education in Madison and nietzsche.com providing promotion and provide statistical analytical material and data for Madison City Schools.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of consent agenda items A through F. We will remove A and vote on it separately. Are there any items, Board, for discussion or any other reason that you'd want to amend the agenda and remove from the consent agenda? Or can we take these as a consent agenda, as a group on consent agenda items?
May I say a couple of things on our policies, just to let the board know. Our self-contained camera policy, we did share. We did get feedback, and we got it from parents. We got feedback from our professional organizations, and we made some minor adjustments to that that the board saw in their update. And we also did the same. We went back on the dress code and worked with our administrative team, and we feel like that the current dress code that we had presented on the first reading was good. However, our administrative team is going to work on procedures at the school level. Dress code will be handled procedurally by administrators. Teachers will not have to handle that in the classroom. If they have an issue that they are concerned about with the dress code, they can email the administrator for that dress code area, and they will handle that without loss of student time if possible in the classroom or doing any of that. So our administrators felt good about the dress code that we had worked with the committee Dr. Donaldson had worked with, and they really felt like that they would work with their staff to make sure we had no occasions where anyone's ever embarrassed and that they handle that as a procedure in their system. The field trips, Board, I just want you to be aware that we've started requesting that folks that are going out of state on a field trip, that we submit that to you for approval. We feel like that that gives, Mr. Trell's been working on updated procedures and forms. We make sure that at the district level that we have the insurance requirements, that we check travel arrangements and all of those types of things, and that for liability, we feel that that's better, that the board approved those. So you'll see more of those in the future.
So we will, we will then, I need a motion, a second for consent agenda item A. We will vote on that separately.
For A, so move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Lesman, and a second by Mr. Cummings. All those in favor of consent agenda item A, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain?
Abstain.
Motion passes. Need a motion and a second for consent agenda items B through F.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Frere and a second by Mr. Cummings. And this, we didn't, nobody asked to pull this out of the consent agenda item, but I've been notified that Mr. Frere would like to say something as part of the consent agenda.
Yes, to make a comment in regards to, I think through the policy committee, we had an extensive discussion for all these policies. I think this has been, I think, the longest and the most important policy committee we have had in a few, in a few years. We did a lot of good conversation and a lot of good things came out of the superintendent recommendation. I think one of the conversation that we hold there was in regards to addressing the tuition toward teachers. I think I would like to speak as part of the committee and also as a board member before we vote on this. And the reason why I wanted to say is, as a committee, when we were having the conversation, we couldn't make a decision if we wanted to remove it or to keep it or to increase it at that point. So we start having a conversation to understand why we had it and why we were moving forward, and the decision we took was to maintain as it is. And the reason why is two. One is, we, as many of you know, this is a recurring tool. This is one of the reasons why we have sometimes CMP workers, bus drivers, custodians, and other employees that come in, and one of the benefit is bringing in their kids so they can be part of the school. This helps the teacher concentrate better at work and other employees because they don't have to worry about, it's 3 o'clock, I got to head out because I got to go get my kid. Another portion that is important for us, and this is for the board and the future board to consider, is removing the cost. And here is my opinion. Most of the revenue that is generated for the schools is based on at valoring. The reason, or at valoring, the reason my house, when I bought it five years or seven years ago, was $324,000, and now it's valued at $550,000, is not me. It's not this board. It's not our councilman. It's not our mayor. It's our teachers. They are the ones responsible for creating the revenue that we're getting because they're providing such a superb service that people are paying for the same house that they could get out in the county or outside the county. And they paying a premium price just to attend our schools. So I know this is my last board, but I would like to lobby for future boards to take that in consideration if the opportunity comes. I know it was a great idea to freeze it instead of increasing it every day, but it's still $360, $360 something dollars, I think. So I think, or teachers came here through COVID, or teacher maintained their quality of education through COVID, or teacher has been responsible for over 20 years to provide one of the best educations in Alabama. So, yes, we will be missing $360 something dollars, but we gaining a lot of more because, once again, there are the reason why we're at valoring. So when you run a, when you run a city, when you run a school system, the most of the revenue is based on at valoring. You always want to enhance what is creating that, and that's our school system, and that's our teachers. So take that in consideration in the future. Thank you.
All those in favor of consent agenda items B through F, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Consent agenda items pass. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval bid 2022-05 of Child Nutrition Program Produce from the Regional Produce, who presented the lowest responsive and responsible bid meeting specifications for a total of $79,335 for one year.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of bid 2022-05, Child Nutrition Program Produce from Regional Produce. Can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Frere and a second by Ms. Lesman. Any discussion, Board?
Mr. President, Mr. Clark's here. If you have any questions, if you look through it, there's a lot of cucumbers, grapes, onions, pears, oranges, pineapples, potatoes, cauliflower, and broccoli. He'd be glad to describe each of those.
If you would come forward, I'd like you to share, one, the difficulty of maybe, of obviously getting, getting estimates or quotes and keeping the price down, and even just, just a little bit to let the public know how hard it is for you to put the food on the plate this year.
Of course, of course. You know, currently, the biggest issue is just getting the food. I mean, from a weekly basis, you know, overall produce hasn't been as bad. Obviously, there has been a general price increase overall, but for our main entree items or any, you know, large quantity items that we need to get in, so whether that be hamburgers, hamburger buns, or hot dogs or hot dog buns, those are some of the big items that we've seen outages on, on a weekly basis. So I just, the main thing I want to say is the menu is a template that may not be actually what we have that day, but I can promise that we will have food for the kids on a daily basis, no matter the situation. So it has been, it's been difficult, and it's been time-consuming trying to track down and find food, but we do have food in the schools, and we will provide a meal every day.
Do you have an idea of how much this cost has gone up over the past year? You know, we talked about our construction supply costs decreasing. You know, for fresh produce, is that a significant increase over this time last year?
Yes, sir. This bid overall is about a 12% increase over our previous bid in 2018.
Anything else, Court? We thank you for the work you put in for the, for the children and running a great CMP program. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Board, if there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols.
Before I do the next one, Mr. President, I do want to say thank you to Cameron. He and many of his staff and managers have come up on weekends and Sundays and at night and whenever the truck could deliver. You know, part of the problem is those times that we used to take for granted of just, you know, regular delivery aren't so regular anymore. And he's also had to get on the phone when a, when a call was made that this would not happen, that what you've ordered will not make it. And he has reached out to other companies around to make sure that he can provide for our kids. And so I just, I want to say thank you, Cameron. I know you and many members of your team have, have been putting extra time and unusual hours to get those things done. So thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval an owner engineering agreement by and between the City Board of Education in Madison and Mechanical Design Services for a boiler replacement at Bob Jones High School.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of an owner and engineering agreement by and between the City of Madison Board of Education and Mechanical Design Services. Can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Lesman and a second by Mr. Frere. Discussion?
Mr. President, members of the board, we are long overdue on a boiler at Bob Jones. I can't count the times last year that Mr. Jones, Mr. Guess, or Mr. Gunner called Mr. Trell and I in the early hours of the morning, and we wondered if it would work at all or if it would get turned on that day. Mr. Jones, probably 20, it's well past its prime, and we look forward to giving them an upgraded boiler. Ms. Lambert nearly jumped off the ceiling with joy when we told her it was on the, on the board agenda.
Questions, comments? I know it's, it's, it's one of our deferred maintenance items that, that we are very thankful to, to get to.
Were we able to use the TIF money with this one?
No, we won't use that money. We've, we've exhausted the 13 million HVAC project, so this will be our own. So it'll be in our own construction money.
Good question. Board, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval amendment to the agreement with the City of Madison regarding the infrastructure related to Journey Middle School.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of an amendment to the agreement with the City of Madison regarding our infrastructure for Journey Middle School. Can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
Mr. President, I might point out that the, the one in my package at least, that we had an update from this on our receipt yesterday, and it may not have gotten in the package. Originally, the request was an extension for completion of those projects from November 1.
Right.
I got an email yesterday from the city attorney saying that when going back with the contractor, it turned out they really need to December 1. So they asked for another month, and she sent me an update which I may not have gotten in the package to you, but I just want to make sure you have the right.
So do we need to make a motion to amend that to December 1?
Yeah, the request, it would be the same amendment, except it would say December 1 instead of November 1.
That's the date that Shane said when he was up here too, right? Didn't he say December 1?
That is the date of substantial completion of Victor Donner. And of course, this date would be for completion of the road projects.
The Sullivan Road and the Garner Road.
Right, the, right, the Garner and.
Okay. All right. We'll make note of that, December 1 on that amendment.
It's in section, third line, section G, and then under two, under item two, it's third line of that.
Okay.
It's November to December.
All right.
Board, the, we already did, we did the motion in a second. Any other, any other discussion on this? I was very excited to see the construction start on the road not, not too long ago. They have, have had, had issues getting that project off the ground and getting it going, but, but it with, thankfully, I guess, silver lining since we're delaying the school a year, that, that the construction of the road shouldn't impact as much. And it looks like it'll, it'll be completed in time for our occupancy when we would like to start using, even though we won't, won't have classes being taught in the school this year. Obviously, we want to, to use the, the school facilities when, when it fits the programming. And so, so having the road done at that time will be very advantageous for that. Anything else? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval of the 2022-2023 Madison City Schools salary schedule. I'm sorry, I skipped one, didn't I? I apologize. Let me go back one. I thought I was looking at that number, wondering why I hadn't said it. Excuse me. Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval the change order number one for Journey Middle School for the increased amount of $448,467. There you go.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of change order number one for Journey Middle School for an increased amount of $448,467. Can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Frere and a second by Mr. Holsy. Open it up for discussion. We talked briefly on it earlier, but if there's any other questions that have, that have come up.
I just skipped it and tried not to spin it. That's what I was doing.
I would say one of the items was an outdoor basketball court, and I will say, every time I've driven by Midtown Elementary, that outdoor basketball court is used significantly. And, and, and I always enjoy seeing, seeing it's, it's kids and adults out there, out there using it. And so.
I would just say, Mr. President, the largest bulk of this is due to the fact that when we designed the school, we didn't have a Garner Road that would be there. So the bulk of this is shifting and redesigning so that we have our fields adequately placed, our practice fields, and those adequately placed where that road's going to move on the south end. And then that 2,000 linear feet of fencing is going to give us that buffer we would need because we have that road there. So the bulk of that, other things of those are just, as the board knows, they, most of you got to go through it. It's a large cafeteria, and there'll be events in there. And so the, the normal speaker system inside a cafeteria that would probably be just, you know, like we have in here, would not be sufficient if you had, you know, large crowds in there for something or a parent meeting or something like that. So the board also is aware that the, the system in the drama room, when, when the project was redirected, then the drama room, as the board saw the other day, is a little larger. You can actually put about 100 seats in that room as though it were a small black box theater. And so this system will be to help the drama program utilize that space. We've not really had a space like that before.
Any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols.
Now, Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval of the 2022-2023 Madison City Schools salary schedule.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the 2022-2023 Madison City Schools salary schedule. Can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Frere and a second by Ms. Lesman. Open it up for discussion.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'll just give you some highlights on this. As the board is aware, the state of Alabama passed a 4% raise for all education employees. They also, at the same time, adjusted the state salary matrix that had been in place, teacher, the teacher salary matrix that had been in place for years. Our salary schedule had steps, 0, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, on up. The state was plateaued. They had 0 to 3 or 4 to 6, and they didn't have those increases each year. So the first thing the state did was to increase theirs and develop steps and do it through step 35, which they had never gone that far. Their desire to do that was to increase salaries for teachers in this time where we know that it's a challenge recruiting and finding teachers, to encourage folks who may be at step 25 or 26 or 27 that have topped out to stay. And so to do that, they not only set those steps aside, but they also increased the percentages of growth in each of those steps. So when the state finished that and created their state salary matrix, we then had two choices, basically. One, Madison, like many school districts, has a salary schedule that's above the state. And we've been above the state. And therefore, you could look at a 4% raise for all school employees, and most of our steps, even if we did a 4%, would still have been above the new state salary matrix. But the gap between them would have closed. Whereas our teachers had been a certain percentage above the state salary matrix, now that, that percentage would close. And so, you know, we felt like, we went back, Laverne and Jana and our, and the folks went back, and we took this year's salary schedule for the state and ours, and we calculated at each step across all degrees, the percent per, at each step, we were above the state salary matrix. And then we took the new state salary matrix and laid those percentages so that if you were a step 10 teacher last year and you were 6% above the state salary matrix, you would be 6% above this year. If you were 10%, on step 20 with a master's, you were 10%, you would be 10% above the salary matrix. And so the schedule you're looking at does that. It takes our steps that we were percent different, and it does that. Now, when we got to step 27, as you'll remember, they went to 35. So we'd never had a 35. So what we did was, I think, we took steps 21 through 27. We calculated the average because if you go through all of those, which we have many times, we can bounce them in our sleep, each step has a different percent. One could be 6, one could be 8, one could be 9. And so we calculated those top steps and came up with an average. those top steps and came up with an average of nine point five, and thereby calculated that out for the new steps twenty-eight through thirty-five. So we laid our salary matrix then next to that with all those percentages and moved that. Um, Laverne and I have talked, and Jana, many times, that the intent of the state of the raise was to encourage and raise those upper years. So for instance, um, this year, currently, a step zero master's degree level teacher will start out at forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars. If you approve the salary schedule next year, they will start out at forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six. That's a four percent increase. The reason it's four percent is that, that's where we were different from the state, and so the four percent is what they got. But at step ten, that increase is six percent, whereas we could have just covered the four. At step twenty, it's ten percent. Uh, step thirty is fifteen percent, which is more in line with what the state did when they changed their steps on the salary schedule. And we just felt like that, you know, as Mr. Ferrer said earlier, we are blessed to have great teachers. And, um, this was a time when the state gave that money and raised those levels, and we just felt like to not keep our distance. If, if, if you were worth ten percent above step ten last year, you're still worth ten percent above step ten this year. And so, um, we're, that's the salary schedule that you have. We feel very good about it. Um, we also looked at the salary schedule in relations to non-teachers. If you go through our salary schedule, we have many positions, um, aides, bus aides, C and P workers, um, bus drivers. And some of those salaries topped out at step fifteen, some of them topped out at eight, some of them topped out at eleven, some of them topped out at five. So we just felt like that we wanted all of those jobs to top out at the same place. And so we have adjusted all of those salary schedules, uh, non-teacher salary schedules, that were not at fifteen, to be fifteen. And so if you have been a bus driver for fifteen years, you, your salary stopped at, at five. And now you will get credit for those years. Now, I would tell you, I wish that we could and would raise those and give more steps for those folks, and that may be something if, if economy stays good, that we could look at in the future, because, um, they, we want folks to maintain their service. But we had folks that were, hadn't, they topped out at five or eight, and we just felt like now was the time, uh, to give them some assistance and make that change. Um, we also adjusted, um, we have a five, uh, it's been a challenge in our special ed DD department, and we've talked about that. So we adjusted the pay schedule for our, a pair of professionals in our DD wings. And we've adjusted them, and I think I, it's a couple of thousand dollars we added, uh, to raise that salary across the steps of it. And we also added a supplement for our teachers that will be teaching in the DD wing of five thousand dollars. Um, you know, that's, that's a challenging, non-stop, sixty minutes, every hour, working with kids. And, um, you know, we just felt like that, uh, that we wanted to recognize that and support our DD, uh, teachers. And, um, so we, we look forward to giving them that, uh, because they do a tremendous job. Uh, we also made a few adjustments, um, in some of, in our coordinator's salary schedules. We were at such a place, uh, in that salary schedule, that if we wanted to promote a principal, uh, to a central office position, we had almost, uh, had them where we couldn't do that. And so we adjusted them just a little to give us wiggle room in case somebody interviewed for a job and wanted, um, to do that, uh, as well. So, uh, the total cost of that is to us is about one point three million. Uh, it was about half a million to give that percent equalization across the salary schedules. Uh, the stat support staff was about five hundred ninety thousand, uh, and then adjusting those others was about two hundred and thirty-five thousand. Uh, we've been blessed, if you go back the last three years, uh, this year alone, our revenues are up eight percent, uh, while our personnel costs are only up three. We also are blessed that the state, even though they don't give it to us as early as we would like, is going to give us more money because of the growth we had last year. As you recall, they used to just send us this twenty percent of the growth requirement in, in November. So now they don't send anything in November, but they're gonna, they're gonna send more, about eighty percent, based on our average. So with all that in place, with the rise that we have and that, we just felt like that we could fix our salary schedule in these areas. There's other things we would like to do, uh, but we'll let the dust kind of settle on these and make sure that everything, uh, goes accordingly. Uh, but I'm very, very excited to present to you a salary schedule that I think, uh, recognizes the dedication and performance of teachers and support staff, um, in this school district, and I, I recommend that to you.
Dr. Nichols, thank you so much. Board?
He explained it, he explained it very well, but I, but it bears repeating, the state sets the scale, but we historically as a system have paid above and beyond that to attract top-quality teachers.
Yes, sir.
So it was obviously very important to maintain that, that distance above, uh, what the state set. So, uh, I'm very excited about this. I think we want to be an employer of choice, teachers in the area. We want to, to, you know, all, all aspects, and certainly your income is a part of that. It's, it's real-world issues you're dealing with, you know, as an individual. So I'm excited that we're able to do this, and I think the finance team did their work and figured out a way to make this happen. So I think it's, uh, well-deserved for our staff.
And I will just thank Jana and Laverne, um, they, I can't tell you how many spreadsheets and, and, uh, their eyes are crossed from trying to look through all the scenarios that we looked at and, uh, and, and then look at what our finances were to do that. And I, I certainly appreciate, uh, all the work they've put into it.
I do appreciate the work they put into it, because frankly, uh, some of you might have been in the know, but we didn't know the state was going to do what they did when they did it. And, uh, and so, uh, as soon as, as soon as the, uh, the, the budget was passed for the, for the ETF and, and that was realized, they went to work. They've, as board as you know, they briefed us during, uh, during our finance committee meetings, gone back and forth on, on, on what, what's, what's prudent for our, for our staff, uh, what, what can we afford? And, and we, we all know that, that the teachers are our greatest asset. It's, it's harder, and, and, and I appreciate, and again, I like to, I like to always use what you say, Dr. Nichols, if, if you're helping kids in our district, you're a teacher. And so, uh, so I, I think i- as important, or maybe, maybe much more so, is the support staff increase for some very difficult jobs that we have. And, uh, you know, we want to attract the best teachers, and, and it is not easy to, to hire educators right now. And, and we want, uh, you know, we have, we have the, the best students and parents, and, and we want to keep the best, the best, uh, staff and teachers. And I think this is a, this is a very good move in that direction.
All I can say is wow. So, but, you know, the amazing part is, since day one that I came here, I was told, we invest where it matter, the person who provide the service. So our employees are the most important part. We, we realize that, and like Mr. Sir Holcomb said, it's not just to recruit, but to maintain high-quality teachers and employees. So, thank you.
I will say, I'm also excited. You know, we've had some discussions about this, so I'm kind of glad the state had this recommendation that kind of put our feet to the fire to, to come up with something that we can do. And I'm glad we not only looked at the state's recommendation that we was able to reach out and help all of our staff. You know, we've had, you know, Cameron come and speak on behalf of the C and P workers, and what can we do? We had, uh, Transportation speak for their, um, workers to see what can we do from a board level to create some more salary opportunities. And I'm just so excited about this, and this is just a exciting direction that this system is heading, because not only this board, but this city, you know, not only expects Madison City Schools to be among the best, they demand that. And I'm glad that we're able to provide some additional funding to just reward those teachers and all the staffs in the system, and the hard work that went behind the scenes on, on being creative to make that happen.
Anything further, board? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols, personnel actions.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval of supplemental contract work performed for Madison City Schools.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the supplemental contract work, uh, performed for Madison City Schools. Can, uh, the list that's in front of you, can that be taken as a group? With the group being fine, uh, can I have a motion and a second?
So move. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Lesman and a second by Mr. Cummings. Any discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Contracts pass. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval of personnel actions presented for the board, uh, for leaves, transfers, resignations, employments, and non-renewals.
Board, the superintendent recommends the, uh, the list of, uh, personnel actions in front of you. Can these be taken as a group? Can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Ferrer and a second by Mr. Hulsey. Discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols, do you have, uh, any, uh, personnel actions you'd like to call attention to?
I would. Uh, Mr. President, I've had, uh, three retirements. I'd like to recognize Ms. Dixie Pascal, uh, former Rainbow, taking position as library media specialist. Uh, she's been, uh, a hard worker there for the school, classroom, motivating students, uh, decorating hallways, uh, whatever she needed to do to be of assistance, uh, uh, in, in the media center. And we wish her a great retirement. She says she'll miss everyone and has loved everyone there. Also, uh, Ms. Amanda Garvin, who's been with Madison City for twenty-eight years, adaptive PE teacher, uh, supported students at Columbia Liberty and James Clemmons, uh, and has built many positive relationships. And then right here in our own building, Ms. Carol Bohatch will be retiring. Celebrate thirty-three years, nineteen of those with Madison City Schools as a pre-AP and AP chemistry teacher at Bob Jones, James Clemmons, a Department of Defense Specialist, federal programs coordinator. Uh, she's done so much. Uh, and people may not know, she played a little softball professionally in Italy before she decided to, I guess, get into teaching, and, uh, helped with aspiring administrator programs, and just has done everything we could ask of Carol. And so we wish all of these, uh, folks a wonderful retirement, and we just hope that their years ahead are as blessed as they have been to being with us. You also, um, hired a new assistant principal for Midtown Elementary School. So please let me introduce Mr. Quentin L. Turner. Mr. Turner is here with us. Uh, Mr. Turner, if you come forward, he is a graduate of the University of West Alabama with his certification in ed leadership from Jacksonville State. Uh, started as a YMCA outreach counselor, and then an interned in the fifth grade, and then started teaching grades two, three, and five, uh, at Central Elementary School in Tuscaloosa, and then, uh, became an instructional coach in grades six through eight, and has served the, the last few years as the reading specialist gate, K three, uh, at New Hope, uh, Elementary School. And Mr. Turner, uh, was, uh, interviewed through a, a lot of candidates, and, um, many of our folks had met him as they worked in instructional partnership trainings and reading specialist trainings around the state, and kept coming back and telling us about him. And, uh, and we were certainly excited he was interested, and, uh, Ms. DeMister is excited to have him join, uh, the Midtown group. So Mr. Turner, welcome to Madison City Schools. We're glad to have you with us. Think he has his family with him, so if you'd please introduce them to us tonight, say anything you would like to the board.
Yes, sir. Um, good evening, board. Thank you, guys. I can't thank you guys enough for the opportunity, uh, for approving the recommendation from the superintendent. I'm really looking forward to this endeavor as we continue on this journey of success in Madison City Schools. I have with me my beautiful wife, Erica Turner. We have an eleven-year-old son, Landon, and I think Kristen and Claire has a baby. You know, he's already made himself friends. We're family, so that'll be Aunt Kristen and Aunt Claire. Again, I can't thank you guys enough. I appreciate it. I'm ready to dive in and get this work done, you know, as we, um, continue this process and provide a safe and nurturing environment for our students as we educate them to greatness at Midtown. Mr. DeMister, I can't wait. We're gonna be great, you know. So thank you again, Mr. Terrell, you know, Dr. Ja, everybody. Uh, thank you, guys. I appreciate it. And thanks again.
Thank you. We're glad to have you with us.
Glad to be here.
And there'll be photos after the board meeting, so don't run away. Does that conclude personnel actions?
Yes, sir.
We will move into superintendent comments.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank Officer Walls and Defazio for being with us tonight, and appreciate our SROs and the work that they do for us. And, uh, just, uh, thank you for your service and, uh, and, and what you do for our community. I just certainly appreciate that. And, uh, also, I would like to thank Dr. Ja, uh, we thank Cameron and, and our finance folks, but I'd like to thank Dr. Ja and her staff and the HR for the end of the school year, and then what's about to happen over the summer is, um, it's her showtime. And, um, so certainly appreciate Dr. Ja and her team and all they've done to get ready and, and, uh, the work that we will continue to do. We have had a couple of weeks since our last board meeting, and that time, Ms. Kristen Steele was in the top four for the Alabama Teacher of the Year. So we were excited that she first made the Sweet Sixteen and that she was in the top four. And we had a great trip to, uh, Montgomery to watch her, um, and, uh, just excited for her. Uh, we also, as somebody mentioned, added a new staff member at Madison Elementary. Barney has joined. Um, I think Barney is the most, uh, recognizable photographed animal in, in town, and, uh, and he's already adapted himself, and, uh, and people are coming to visit Barney. Um, Monday night, we had two great graduations. A thousand and thirty-seven students graduated. My hand is still tired, um, and my back, and, uh, but what a great class. Nineteen percent of that senior class had a thirty or above on the ACT. Now, I know that all of us in this room had a thirty or above on the ACT. Um, I did, two fifteens. They added them together. But, uh, we had eight perfect scores, uh, out of those nineteen percent. Uh, we had, I think, if I counted, eight military appointments. One of them's going to Air Force down there. Uh, we had, uh, several to the middle, the West Point. We had one young man that got a Navy and a military appointment, had to make his choice. Uh, he said, go Navy. And, um, we also had thirty-eight National Merit finalists, I believe that was right. Uh, and that's, that's incredible with a presidential, uh, two presidential semifinalists and a presidential scholar. And we had, um, we'll get you the whole list, but Dr. Donaldson's working on all the bilingual certificates, the career tags, uh, it just goes on and on. And so this has been a great class. Um, they have done tremendous things. They've been challenged the last few years, but they've, uh, they and their teachers and their parents and our community, we've all worked, and, uh, we're very proud of what they've done. That, I believe that the West Point number is the highest for, uh, JC had the most appointments to military academies in the nation as a high school. And I am sure that Bob Jones, with nineteen National Merit finalists, beating JC by one, had the most National Merit finalists in the state of any school district or any school. We had the most. So that's pretty good. He has a pretty good track record right there. So we're very proud of them. Also, Bob Jones and James Clemmons were recognized, uh, week four last as banner schools, schools of distinction. And, and Bob, uh, James Clemmons won the banner for our district out of, uh, all the high schools that were submitted. Uh, we also had a fun morning over at the Space and Rocket Center. Uh, our building construction team partnered with Blue Origin, and also with the Space and Rocket Center to build a postbox to be used at the Space and Rocket Center, uh, for, but postcards to. We were in proficiency levels of like ninety-five percent on third grade and second grade reading on the first look at that. Okay, I didn't say that. Um, we'll, we'll give you more data on that later, but, um. our folks, our folks did a tremendous job. We're just now getting those, uh, ACAP scores, the rough data back and looking at it. And, you know, our team, we're not gonna wait on them to send their final thing from the state. Ms. Memes and, and Dr. Donaldson and they're all already scouring that data. But our, our kids did a tremendous job and our teachers, uh, on those. And, uh, as you know, that's important because of the Literacy Act. And, uh, and, uh, so, you know, that's pretty, pretty impressive for our folks. And, uh, we also have the opportunity for those that maybe didn't get that mark to do that work over the summer or those types. So, I just, you know, um, I just can't tell you how proud we are of our teachers. I'm proud, board, that you, um, approved letting us, um, give them what I think was meant for them in the, in the Pay Act of the legislature and reward our folks who do so much, uh, provide that. And we continue with a look at salary schedules in the future. We're not, we're not through. We wanna look at our supplemental salary schedules and we wanna look at other areas. It really helps us when, uh, when, when the state helps us out, and they, uh, did that this year with an incredible budget. But we also want to be prudent and kinda let that dust settle and then take a look at what can be done 'cause we've got building projects we wanna do. Playgrounds, some, uh, we, we're getting the final look at our playgrounds and they will have opportunities for our students, the mobility issues. We had a great meeting with the PTAs and they talked about that. And so that, that got sent back to Mr. Nola to, to look at what we could do to add that. And so we've got that on the horizon. We're, we're kinda, Shane told you, our biggest dilemma right now may be, and as we look at building things, is just the cost and the scheduling. You know, if, if we were sitting here two years ago, uh, I'd probably be talking about really starting some dirt work on, on an eighth elementary school. But we're gonna have to kinda see what this looks like with these construction costs. And also, um, the, the interest rates. You know, just six months ago, I think, Laverne, correct me if I'm wrong, but six to eight months ago, you could bond a million dollars at, at, um, about $60,000. So, for $6 million, you could bond $100 million. The interest rate going up now is we're upwards to $80,000 for a million. So, you're talking about another $2 million, uh, debt cost, uh, to try to do that. So, um, she also told me that we've got a 25% increase in our transportation fuel cost, uh, that's gonna come. So, you know, we're all in that, that timeframe where, um, we're, we're trying to manage all that and look at it. And I'm certainly grateful to, again, to Janet Laverne for the work that they do to keep an eye on that. Certainly appreciate all the work that our staff is doing. Dr. Donaldson, uh, and, and Tish over there coordinate, making sure that we all, uh, get graduation in place or other activities that go on. And, uh, we certainly appreciate that. And Mr. Terrell being the fireman for the school district. And Mr. Jones, uh, he's just running nonstop. So, I mean, we just got a great team, um, uh, of everybody that's working hard and, and the fruition of our great teachers and our administrators. So, uh, we're closing out a year. I think there's four days left. I don't know. These parents know how many days are left. The kids know. I went down the hall and asked one at, at the high school this morning, "How many days are left?" And she said, "Too many." And, uh, I told her, "That's how your teachers feel. Just hang in there." So, um, but, uh, but, you know, it's, it, the challenges have been there, but through it all, our staff, our teachers, and everybody's worked together and, and we've had some tremendous successes, uh, for the district. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Nichols. Well, board tonight, uh, as, as you're aware, this is, uh, Mr. Ferrer's last board meeting with us tonight. And so I'm gonna break protocol, uh, a little bit from our normal, our normal way of, uh, of doing our comments. And then, uh, and then I'll return it to you guys in case there, and, and, and I'll even allow Dr. Nichols some go-banks if he needs some go-banks. But, uh, the, uh, the central office here and Ms. King and the, and Dr. Nichols and the board, uh, has prepared just a, a little, little gift with, with, uh, some mementos in it. I believe you have a, uh, a watch, Ms. King, for his service, a certificate, and a couple of other items if you wanna take a look at that. Luis is, uh, you know, served five full years on this, uh, this board. We, we say, we say often, uh, one of the great things about, about, uh, Madison City Schools is that this is an appointed board and it's citywide and that, uh, there aren't any, 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 a board member that wants, wants something for this school to, which means they're gonna try to take something really from another part of the district. That's really a, a characteristic of high-performing districts across this state and, uh, and the nation for that matter. Luis fits that mold absolutely perfectly. He's, he's a, uh, a selfless, uh, uh, community supporter. He, he has absolutely no agenda. He doesn't care about recognition. He, he wants to, he wants to serve in the community. He wants to, uh, to ensure we focus on every student, on all students, as we say often. It's, uh, you never have to know if Luis is asking you a question about something. It is not because he's angling for something that he's trying to work, uh, that, 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 you know, will promote something over something else. He is, he is truly looking at, uh, after the, uh, the heart of the children. He's, he's just as concerned about the staff. It's, uh, it's special to work with somebody, somebody like Luis. He, uh, he improves this entire board by what he brings to the table. And it was an honor to, uh, to work with him for five years and I'm sure he will not be a stranger to this board. We have, uh, another great thing about this board being, uh, being non-political is, is we have had a history of great board members and they do not necessarily disappear. And they come back and, and they, they serve on committees or they advocate for us with, uh, in, in other realms. And, and, uh, we, we certainly, uh, know that you'll, you'll enjoy. You've had, you've had an extremely pressing, uh, uh, work schedule. And, and we know you'll enjoy having, having a few more minutes to your day, but, but it, it sure comes at a cost to this board and we, we appreciate everything you've done. Now, Mr. Mr. Ferrer, Luis, it's your party. Uh, you can cry if you want to. Would, would you like to talk now or would you, uh, would you like me to hand it over to Ms. Lesman and, and let us work, work down the table first?
Let me go first.
Okay.
And I'm gonna be a little bit extensive, but I'd be, I just wanna say something because I'm always sincere. If I don't agree or disagree with you, I always listen to you. And I promise you, I always, if right is right, like, like Travis always embedded in me. Right is right, wrong is wrong. It doesn't matter who they, it comes from. So, one of the things that I, I wanna say is, is, it's amazing. The sad part is we're gonna get a, a new board member and I usually tend to, I feel like my first year, I didn't know what I was getting into. I'm just being sincere. And the funniest part is, like I always say and tell a lot of the new board, more members when they come in, I know now less than what I did the first day because the first day I thought I knew everything. Now I know that I don't know. There's a lot of things that, that has to be done as a school system. And the school system itself is so wonderful that it makes our job easier. So, in, in, in that case, I wanna share for any, for a new board member that is coming in, three things that I always tell all new board members. First thing that I learned from Mr. Cummings, it's not "I," it's "we." If you sit in this table and it's about a "I", you, you need to, you, you need to find another job. Second part is, you have to understand the concept of a board member. We're not here to run the system. I'm not here to tell the teacher what they need to do in their school, in their, in their classroom. I'm not here to tell a principal how to run their school. I'm not here to tell central office what they need to do. I'm here to govern the system. So, what the important part of being a board member or being a board is to provide all the resources and the policies so we can continue to be successful and to make sure that we provide those teachers everything they need in the classroom. So, that's something that we, as a community, need to learn. I'm not here to, the only thing I'm here is to listen to the superintendent recommendation, providing feedback and make sure I provide everything he needs to be successful. Third part, if I were to do everything again, Ms. Bartlett gave me the best advice somebody can give. And unfortunately, I didn't listen. And what she told me was, "Luis, the best thing you can do for the first year is sit there and listen 'cause you will learn a lot by just sitting there and listening because there's a lot of things that it's gonna take a while to understand." But being myself and being, "I wanna get it done", I didn't get to do that. So, that's something that I have conveyed. I put that expectation on me that I was here on my first year to know everything. It's not. So, I will, hopefully you will convey that to the new board member. Also, I would like to communicate this to the staff and employees. I would like to, I, I feel like I could be delusional to say that I made a lot of difference, but I will tell you this. I have gained more to working with y'all than what I have offered the school system. Unfortunately, I don't have time, the time I used to have because of where I'm at in my career. The reason where I'm at, where I'm at in my career is because I have been able to enhance my ability and been able to fly through the ranks because I have applied everything that I seen from our central office or principals and our superintendents. I just mimic, apply, and it's, I'm getting at work the same satisfaction and the same, uh, results that I'm seeing is happening here. And this is not because of me, it's because of y'all. Also, and this is, I swear this is the last one before I. In the past year, I've sit here and I have heard a lot of comments. If from a perspective, I always see things in a different perspective. And I will tell, I would like to tell everybody this. It's really easy to come in, you know, couch quarterback, being a principal, being a superintendent, being an assistant superintendent. Put it on this perspective where I come from. I come from being a councilman. Just to put it in perspective, a principal here on a daily basis has more people in their school than most municipalities have in their towns. Some of our school systems are as big that they could be considered a city. So, imagine being a mayor or, or a principal, but you have to be responsible for where everybody is in the city or a town. Everybody make sure that they eating, make sure they're in the right spot, make sure they're doing the right thing, and make sure that all his people are doing the right thing. No major, no other organization have that. It's not like we at work where we can make a decision and do a do-over tomorrow. You cannot do over a mistake for a kid. Once you make that mistake, it takes a lot of effort to be able to make sure you correct that mistake. As a superintendent, you govern over almost 4,000 people or 14,000 people, right? So, you managing on a daily basis the equivalent to know where everybody in accounting Alabama, where they at, are they in the right spot, are they here in time, are they getting everything? So, think of that when you come in and say, "Hey, superintendent, why you not paying attention?" 14,000 leaving people you are responsible and you are accountable for every day. For, not for only eight, 10, 24 hours because if something happens, the person who called is those two right there. So, think about that and, and when the next time you come and try to hold our teachers or, or principals or central office and, or superintendent, do you truly think that they have the time and the resources to take care of what you try to say he needs to be accountable? Think about that because I will tell you this. I wish that I, which I have changed in the past five years to hold myself accountable, to provide the same quality. I wish people would come from all over the world just to say, "Them and I wanna be there at Luis so that Luis can, can award all my contracts." But I'll tell you what, people come from India, people come from Japan, people come from Puerto Rico, people who come from all over the world for an opportunity to sit on that classroom. And they do whatever it takes to be able to do it. So, with that said, thank you for everything. I'm gonna miss you all. This has been the best experience I ever had. I've never been, as a councilman, as, or, or the things that I have never done. I have never sit down on a table with, with an opportunity to work with people that I feel. I feel so blessed because I sometimes feel that I'm the dumbest. If I'm not, I'm the dumbest person in the room. So, I get to learn from six other people on a daily basis. You know, or, and, and not only that, they are the most selfless 'cause he takes a lot of, a lot of time, the advantage of being an appointed board is you get to do the right thing. And you get to do the right thing because I don't have to cater to the few or to the only ones. I get to cater unbiasedly to no district and no, to no political party. So, take that in consideration. I got a lot of parents that are sitting in front of me. They got the right goal. You, we all want the same thing. We all want to make this better. We just need to agree and understand what the right approach is and work together. So, I, I'm telling you, if you go see, compare to our peers, and I'm gonna get in trouble for what I'm saying, and if you compare to our state and you compare to 95% of this nation, we outperforming them. And we don't have a lot of money, but we have a lot of heart and it's our employees. So, thank you for everything. That's all I got.
Mr. Hulsey?
I'd be happy to go. I'd be happy to speak, Ms. Hulsey, if you're not ready.
Go ahead.
Because I'm, I'm kidding, I'm sitting over here, you know, jumping. But, Mr. Holcamp, you described Mr. Ferrer perfectly. I will say, when I came onto the board, Mr. Ferrer, you know, reached out to me and told me, "Hey, these are some of the things I've done wrong. Let me tell you. These are some of the things you, that you're gonna be responsible for as a board member." So, he put me through like a boot camp, you know, and just pros and cons on what we supposed to do, our responsibilities and duty. And I will say, we have become friends during this, serving on the board together. And as Mr. Holcamp said, he is actually selfless and he is really driven to provide services for all the students and teachers in Madison City Schools. And the conversations behind the scene and his passion that he have and the love that he has for the system that has given his kids, you know, tremendous opportunities is just outstanding. And, Mr. Ferrer, I will tell you, you know, you would truly be missed, but like Mr. Holcamp said, someone with your passion and your desire to watch this system continue to grow, I'm sure you'll be around and, and serve on many committees in the future.
Yes, sir. I'm not going anywhere. I got five more years.
I guess I'll go. Mr. Ferrer, Luis, I will agree, um, like Travis said, he, Luis reached out to me immediately when I got on the board and told me all his mistakes and, and kinda gave me some guidance. This is- This is how things are usually done, come to me if you have any questions. And I thought that was really huge of him to tell me, 'cause some of his mistakes were pretty, you know, embarrassing, like, really bad. From what, what he told me, and, and I didn't even know him, and he was like, don't do this, this is what I did, look what I've learned. He has nothing but good things to say about people. He, he is very non-judgmental, he listens, he listens to both sides. Many conversations have we had where he, and he asks me questions, and I come up with my own answer. So, he's been, you know, I, thank you for being my mentor, Luis, I'm, you... I'm gonna miss you, but I'm gonna still call you. He has been a little more scarce than usual, since he's been promoted so quickly, um, at work, but, um, he always calls me back, and, um, I just wanna say, it's been a, an honor and a privilege to serve with you, and I'm so thankful for this opportunity to have gotten to know you, and as a friend as well. I consider you a very good friend. Thank you.
Excuse me, President, I know we just all random here, but I do wanna speak on one thing, and she said this, you know, Ms. Lesman said, you know, mistakes, and some of the things that, when Mr. Farrar came in, the way he explained it, he was passionate and wanted to do something to help.
Yes.
And he thought he needed to fight for it, but until he got a chance to learn the system and learn how central office operated, they was already working on where we thought problems might have existed. Is that correct to say?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Always good intentions, always good intentions.
Always.
Luis, I want to thank you for your service to the board. You, you truly are a, a servant leader, someone who's selfless in, in all that you do. Every action you take, every decision you make, you've always had, you know, my experience on the board, uh, nothing but the best interest of our students in mind with everything you do. Uh, and you're, you're very sincere in that, you're very passionate about that, and you have, you have given an inordinate amount of your time the last five years, uh, at no compensation, uh, fighting for our children. So, I appreciate everything you've done on behalf of my children personally, but also for all the students in our system. You ma, you, you made interesting comment that I agree with, you know, we have different perspectives, you and I, um, we have different backgrounds, we have different perspectives on things sometimes, but I always appreciate your perspective, 'cause at the end of the day, we're all working towards the same goal, as for the betterment of our kids and our school system, our teachers. So, I thank you for all that, thank you for your friendship you've given me the last few years, I do consider you a friend, and I'll certainly stay in touch, I know, um, I think you were the first person to contacted me when I was appointed to the board, and I had similar conversations to what Travis and Alice had. So, I appreciate all you've done for me personally, all you've done for our system, and yes, I know we will continue to see you around in, in maybe a new capacity, a different role, uh, but your, your input and your voice and your advocacy will always be welcomed by Madison City Schools.